of the Buncombe County Commission to Order. Thank you all for being with us this evening. Let's begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise and join us for the pledge. All right, thank you all again for being with us this evening. Any of you have cell phones with you? Please turn them off or put them on mute. I'd like to announce that if anyone is participating in this meeting, we have parking validation at the county parking deck. For those who are attending this evening, you can have this validated by the sheriff's officers who are here this evening. Or if you use transit to travel to the meeting, you can have that validated as well. It's valid for today only. Let me read the ethics reminder to the board. In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the Board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing board in an open and public manner. Is there any item on the agenda the outcome of which will have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any board member? Does any board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before the board today? There being none, all board members have a duty and obligation to vote on any matters voted on by the board at this meeting. Commissioners, are there any questions about any items on the consent agenda? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda and the remainder of the agenda as published with the addition of the recognition of pro bono celebration day, which we'll do under presentations?
So move.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we now come to public comment. And how many members of the public have signed up to address the board this evening?
Seven members of the public that have addressed the public comment. I think we have two that signed up for in person. But I think one person has decided that they're not going to do it in person. But I think they're going to be on the phone. So we're going to do the in-person public comment first, and then we'll go virtually.
Okay, and we do have we do have public hearings this evening. Are we going to take public comment when we get to those items on the agenda? Or do them at the beginning?
Nobody that I'm aware of signed up for the public hearing. I think they just signed up for general public comments.
Okay.
Unless something has changed.
Okay, so then I will ask for okay, so when we get to those items on the agenda, I will open a public hearing. It sounds like we're not likely to have public comment during that time, but we will open it, open a public hearing for those items. All right, then we're ready to begin the public comment then. Don Yelton, come on up.
Yeah, I think it's legal to lower your mask when you're speaking to a microphone. And I think everyone of ours are definitely six foot apart, so we're being good shape.
That's fine.
You're probably surprised to see me, but you're probably not surprised to see me. The only thing I hate is not being able to see the expressions on your face when I discuss something, because I know that I've been here so much, you're tired of seeing me and don't want to see me, and probably shut your ears up when I speak. But what I'm talking about today is extremely serious and extremely important for the next 100 years, which I won't live to see. And I could sit here and say that, and very few of you will probably be here 100 years from now. But with what you're fixing to do with the Vance Monument, when the city manager said in her 30, 60, and 90-day plan, she wanted the Vance Monument removed and roads renamed. And what you're doing, selecting a select group of people in the population of Asheville and highlighting them, and what you're doing with this 1619 date that you've got in here, you left out the fact that there were slaves in the North. You left out the fact that the Indians actually made slaves when they accomplished and attacked someone else. And I am very, very proud to stand here and repeat what James Carville said. And I thought God would never let me say anything about good about James Carville, because he was a Democrat hack and his wife was a Republican hack. And they lived off politics. But he said, "When I look out, I don't see a black or brown community. I see a community. And when I look up there, I know a lot about each of you, and I've studied you. I know a lot about your county manager and how they say that she spoke to everybody in New Hanover County." And I'm going to tell you what, folks, if you go through with all these actions, you're going to put a rift between the races that will have an impact 100 years from now. And I want you to seriously consider that. And I can't call out somebody I would love to sit down and have a two-hour conversation with, because your rules won't let me do that. And I think your rules are hurting communication, because we should be able to stand here and have a discussion about the topics that affect this county. And I would love to have seen you cover the fact about that, what, $8 million or $18 million extra that you got? You get extra money? Any politician is going to spend it. They never think about the generator of the money, the taxpayer. But I do thank you for the opportunity to look you in the face and see what you're looking at and see whether you're looking down or at me. Have a good one. 13 seconds left.
Okay, all right, thank you, Don. It's good to see you. All right, Mr. Joyner, who's next? Or whoever's facilitating that?
I think we're going to start the virtual component of public comment.
Okay.
Our first speaker will be James Fulton. James Fulton will be followed by Grant Millen. James, you have three minutes.
Thank you and good afternoon. My name is James Fulton and I live in Arden. I've seen many people come here to talk about disadvantages in their lives. So I wanted to remind people that many of us enjoy working hard and taking care of ourselves and our families rather than learning to rely upon the government. I've joined this afternoon to let you know that I feel as though our county government is being run as though it was a nonprofit charity. And I feel that conservative values are completely dismissed by county government here. I do not know whether you adequately assess the potential impact that the recently passed special considerations and anti-discrimination ordinance will have on small business owners. I see nothing in that ordinance that gives any consideration to how small businesses can protect themselves from frivolous claims and resulting financial penalties. I do not know what kind of effort was put into fully assessing whether there was a real need for passage of that ordinance. So I feel as though you passed an ordinance just because you could rather than because it was truly needed. Conservatives believe in smaller government, not larger government. I'm an adult. I don't need a government to tell me where I should go to the bathroom. I can figure that out. I was brought up to believe that I need to work harder than my competitors if I want to have nice things in my life. I was taught to find a good employer who provided good benefits, such as health insurance. I've paid money into Social Security and Medicare to help ensure that I'm not a burden to others when I can no longer work and need assistance caring for myself. I cringe at the thought of Medicare for All or Social Security for All. Those are, those are insurance programs and investment programs that I've been paying into. That's my money. It doesn't belong to people who didn't contribute. I had to reply upon, rely upon the WIC program to help provide for my infant daughter for about six months when I was young and working in the fast food industry. I often had to rely on my parents to provide me with groceries. None of that is true today. I help my daughter out when she needs assistance, but I try to take care of myself. I just wanted to remind people that many of us find that there's, there's more grati- there's more gratitude in work than in relying upon the government. God bless America and our founding fathers. God bless our military and our law enforcement officers. Thank you for your service.
Our next speaker is Laura Lustig. Laura Lustig is our next speaker, followed by Rachel Bliss.
Hey, I just want to make sure if y'all can hear me.
We can hear you. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Hi, Commissioners, this is Lira Lustig from West Asheville. It's Teacher Appreciation Week, and I'd like to share my gratitude for my children's teachers at Asheville Primary School. Thank you, Ms. Bonnie, Coach Ken, Ms. Beth, Ms. Kelly, Mr. Sean, Mr. Knox, and so many others for your hard work, your dedication to our children, your fidelity to the hands-on, student-centered Montessori model, and your commitment to making sure that every single child feels seen, heard, empowered, and valued as an essential part of our community. Y'all are amazing, both in and out of the pandemic, and we are so, so grateful. Right now, this very week at Asheville Primary School, they are packing up the books in the library, preparing to vacate and close the school, an action that the superintendent proposed and justified by using misleading enrollment numbers depressed by COVID and which was never approved by vote of the school board. Over the past month, the superintendent and former vice chair of the board started telling Mayor Manheimer and other APS and ACS preschool families that their decision to close our school was made in October. Then they changed their story and said it was December 7. But at the December 14 special call meeting, the vice chair herself said we were just starting a process, that nothing was decided yet. Regardless, Asheville Primary School has not been closed in accordance with NC's school closing procedures. The truth is the school board never voted to close our school, or if they did, it wasn't in public meeting, and therefore that decision was illegal. District leadership seems to want their decisions to seem inevitable and irreversible, has hired a $90,000 PR firm to spin their short-sighted moves as a matter of equity, claiming to serve the needs of Black and Brown students when in reality, as they have explained to the ECE Grant Committee, they're making decisions based on anecdotes. The truth is that chaos like this creates and exacerbates inequity. ACS has been causing a huge upheaval for so many families by throwing next year's preschool plans into uncertainty and shuffling these pre-K classrooms for no net gain instead of coordinating with other organizations in the county to prioritize increasing pre-K slots overall. We need to come together. We can serve all of our kids, and we can do it really well. But we need real leaders who put kids' needs first when making decisions about resources and budgeting. Commissioners, I don't think you should give a single dime to Asheville City Schools until they press pause on closing Asheville Primary, pull back the curtain, and get extremely transparent about where the district's money is going and why and how it will directly serve children. Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Grant Millen, followed by Rachel Bliss. Grant, you have three minutes.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that Vance, the Vance Monument is over. If the task, the Vance Monument Task Force wasn't necessarily the most transparent project ever, but that's over, just like Jim Kurt needs to be over. And the only question is, there is supposedly, supposedly a $70,000 investment in a vision process. I wanted to go ahead and help stimulate conversation about what happens once the Vance Monument is gone. It, I was not fun, but I'm glad I did that. And I'll talk about that later. But I wanted to say that God blesses persons with disabilities. I tried to ask you all where the disabled fit in to Equity Strategy with Buncombe County. City of Asheville, they've done a great job at just kicking the disabled off the Equity Strategy bus altogether. And you all should know the disabled population of Buncombe County. If you look up the Census, Census Quick Facts on how many disabled folks live in Buncombe County, you'll get the under 65 number. If you find out the over 65 number and add the two, you'll get a huge number that's larger than all of the Buncombe towns, like, like Biltmore Forest and Black Mountain and Weaverville and Woodfinn combined. And you all should know that number. You should know that population. It shouldn't just be a group of people that are over in the Department of Health and Human Services, and they're out of sight and out of mind for you. You all talked about your Christian credentials last meeting. This is where the rubber meets the road on such things, that Jesus talked about the disabled and ministry to the disabled a whole lot. I think some, some of you have been on nonprofit boards that deal with the disabled, but they get knee rights and resources too. And with that, I wanted to ask about the MacArthur Safety and Justice Challenge and what's going on with that $3.5 million? That's a huge amount of money. That's not like buying water main pipe. It, when you spend $3.5 million on strategy, you're going that out to various strategic partners or nonprofits, it should make a big impact. And I've seen some of the impact ideas about there not being more crime, there were citizenism not increasing. When you're talking about the serious crime perpetrators, they look like they're just going out, they're cycling in and out of the justice system. They go out and get into things like fentanyl trafficking, get illegal guns.
Your time has ended.
Yeah.
Your time has ended. Our next speaker will be Rachel Bliss, followed by Shifra Allers.
Hello, am I being listened to?
Yes, ma'am. We are ready for you.
Thank you. This is the first time I've tried this with the county commission. I have a couple of things to talk about tonight. I want to congratulate the commission that they have a few good things on the agenda. One, I think is about the Juneteenth anniversary or the city holiday or county holiday. Think that's a great idea, and I hope it will continue into infinity. I support this. Also, I want to congratulate the commission for their passing of the resolution for apparations. And I hope that this is going to be a serious project for the commission, because, you know, so much of the work that made our county what it is was on the backs of African-Americans who received absolutely no pay. And it's about time we paid their descendants. So I suggest that the 2022 budget have a line item for apparations, real money for real people. And lastly, one thing that I do not want to congratulate the council for is the fact that they use non-disclosure agreements in, when they work with economic development. On Thursday, we'll have the groundbreaking for Pratt and Whitney. And this will be a sad day for our community. It'll be a sad day for the environment and a very sad day for those of us who work for peace. I think that the commission knew the defense company was coming into town. They could have told us, because this is a government of, by, and for the people, and we need to be helpful in making final, big decisions such as this. I mourn Thursday, May 6, when so much land that has been cleared for a war-making company is, the work will be starting on building that 1.2 million square foot building that will eventually help make F-35s that go over and kill people in Yemen and other places where brown-skinned people live. Please, no more NDAs. Let the people know when the economic development people come to a decision. We need to have a say on things such as this. And thank you for the work that you do to, on behalf of our community. Thank you.
Our final speaker is Shifra Allers, and that will conclude our virtual public comment once Shifra has their three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Shifra Allers. I live in the city of Asheville. I urge county commission to deeply consider every dollar given to Asheville City Schools that is now wasted on the bloated administration who are not acting in a financially responsible manner. Save Asheville Primary School would like the following. We want a moratorium on school closures for two years while the city school board transitions to an elected one. We want to preserve all pre-COVID preschool and Montessori classrooms. We want to reopen the enrollment for Asheville Primary's Montessori, all the classrooms, the preschool classrooms, and we want to expand to fourth grade. Why do we have as many administrative positions at the Asheville City Schools as Buncombe County when the county has five times the number of students as the city? It makes no sense. Even in the pandemic, Asheville City Schools added a new deputy superintendent while they're closing the only five-star preschool in the district citing a lack of funds. It certainly sounds like financial mismanagement, and we deserve better. Our priority just need to be focused on the students and the teachers of the district. We understand that Asheville Middle School is going to close one of its banned teaching positions. Why? Banned is a great way for students to make connections with their teachers and their classmates in a healthy and safe fashion. Again, is there financial mismanagement? At the end of the last Asheville City School Board meeting, Shonda Sanford, board member, provided false information to the entire community referencing Asheville Primary School and stating, "When you only have two Black students in a program and less than 15 in a school." Last year, there were actually 72 non-white students at Asheville Primary and 37 identified as Black. Asheville Primary is one of the most diverse schools in the North Carolina district, in the state of North Carolina, based upon national data. And last year, APS had 18% Black students, while Asheville High School had only 14.6% Black students. Why would board members offer false information? It's the same board member who did not recuse herself when discussing closing the five-star preschool and in fact recommended moving the preschool classrooms to the Asheville Housing Authority for which Shonda Sanford receives personal and professional benefit. The central office plan to move APS Montessori to Hall Fletcher puts Hall Fletcher over capacity by an entire classroom. Don't we want less students sharing space in the classroom now? The numbers are misleading, and therefore they have to limit enrollment for the Montessori program so that we could be maintained at Hall Fletcher. Why are we giving false information? And why can't we have APS in addition to the Housing Authority preschool classrooms? Furthermore, we want to maintain the school number. We would like benefits like state and federal grants and HVAC system fix due to federal funding and COVID relief. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our virtual public comment.
All right, I want to thank all the members of the public who took time to speak to the Board of Commissioners this evening. All right, we now move to presentations. And the first one is a proclamation recognizing National Nurses Week, and Commissioner Amanda Edwards is going to present this proclamation. And Stoney Blevins is here, and actually Stacy is here. So I'm sorry. And Stoney and Stacy are both here, who received this. Thank you for being with us.
This is the county of Buncombe proclamation of National Nurses Week. Whereas since 1990, May 6 through May 12 has been observed as National Nurses Week culminating on the birthday of Florence Nightingale. And whereas, public health nurses in Buncombe County continue to play a critical role in responding to the coronavirus disease 2019 pandemic, investigating cases, conducting contact tracing, administering vaccine, and providing guidance and education to community members. And whereas, public health nurses on a routine basis promote health by providing education, preventive health screenings, interventions, and support in clinics, schools, and the community. Advocate for programs and policies to support health equity and identify and implement evidence-based programs to improve health and empower individuals and communities to achieve well-being. And whereas, public health nurses in Buncombe County deliver compassionate and respectful care while embodying the principles of ethical practice in their profession. And whereas, Buncombe County Health and Human Services and its clinical services programs have recognized the observance of Nurses Week. Now therefore, Brownie Newman, as chairman of the Buncombe County Commission, serving Buncombe County, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim May 6 through 12, 2021 as Nurses Week in Buncombe County and commend its observance to all citizens, proclaimed and approved this fourth day of May 2021. We are so incredibly grateful for the work of our Buncombe County Public Health Nurses as well as our entire public health staff. We know and recognize what a challenging year this has been on each and every one of you, and we are so grateful for your dedicated service to Buncombe County.
Hi, Ellis Vaughn. I am the Director of Nursing for Buncombe County Health and Human Services. And on behalf of all of my colleagues, while yes, it has, in my 20-plus years of public health nursing, this has definitely been the most intense. I've never been more proud to be a public health nurse and in awe of my colleagues and their dedication, their passion, and their leadership that they have shown this last year. So on behalf of all public health nurses at Buncombe County, thank you for recognizing our service.
Thank you so much. Okay, we have another proclamation, and Commissioner Jasmine Beach-Ferrara is going to present this item, recognizing attorneys in our community who carry out pro bono service.
Good evening. I'll read aloud this proclamation in honor of Pro Bono Celebration Day. Whereas the Buncombe County Bar's annual pro bono celebration highlights the amazing free legal work performed by hundreds of lawyers, paralegals, and volunteers across the county. And whereas, the Bar's pro bono committee works to honor the tremendous impact lawyers make in our community, recruit and train new pro bono volunteers, and create partnerships that form the basis of the private bar's most successful pro bono efforts. And whereas, every year, thousands of citizens within Buncombe County benefit from the free legal work provided by members of the Buncombe County Bar. And whereas, over the last year, over 300 volunteer attorneys provided over 3,343 hours of free legal work, estimated to be worth over $835,750. And whereas, the following attorneys and pro bono projects have been recognized this year by the Buncombe County Bar for their exceptional pro bono work. Barrett McFatter, Young Lawyer Pro Bono Award. Julie Northup and Van Vogel, Emeritus Lawyer Pro Bono Award. The Unemployment Insurance Benefit Project, Collaborative Legal Project Pro Bono Award. Jean Lee, Outstanding Lawyer Jean Lee, Outstanding Lawyer of the Year Pro-Bono Award. And William Christie, Lifetime Achievement Pro-Bono Award. And whereas, the citizens of Buncombe County are better off when justice is not limited to only those who can pay for an attorney. Now therefore, the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim May 12th, 2021, as Pro-Bono Celebration Day in Buncombe County and call upon all Buncombe County residents to recognize and appreciate the dedication and contributions of these legal professionals who enhance the lives of our citizens by providing free legal work to those most in need throughout our community. And this is signed. In witness thereof, Brownie Newman here on to set my hand and cause the seal of the County of Buncombe to be affixed this fourth day of May, 2021. Thank you. And this will be presented to members of the Buncombe County Bar prior to their event on May 12th, recognizing these individuals. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right. Next up under Presentations, we have with us Dr. John Gossett, who is the President of AB Tech, to give us an update from our Community College and Board of Trustees. Thank you for being here, Dr. Gossett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, County Commissioner. I appreciate the opportunity to talk with you tonight about AB Tech. If I can't handle the technology, maybe they chose the wrong guy. I'm not going to read these PowerPoint slides to you. You've seen them. You know that we've been a part of this community for a long, long time, and we are very, very proud to be your community's college, serving over 20,000 students. Of course, in a pandemic year, that number dropped as it did in all community colleges all across the nation, actually. Many of our students are in workforce development programs, about 6,6500 in four-credit classes and programs, degrees, diplomas, certificates, two years down to one semester. I'll also tell you, as you may know, well-know, our main campus there on Victoria Road. We also have some locations. We talked, I think, last month about our INCA location, the good work we do there in small business incubation. We have our brewing and distilling program there. Start just an awful lot of small businesses out of that INCA office, and we're very proud of that because that is a huge economic engine for Buncombe County. We also have presence up in Woodfin. That's where our emergency services, law enforcement are trained. We have a small presence on the south side down near the airport, as well as up in Madison County. You're well aware that we serve Madison as well. And the really, to me, the interesting and important work done with Goodwill, ABCCM, and their Trans, I'm going to get that wrong, Transformation Village, the Veterans Restorative Center there on Highway 70, trying to help people get on their feet educationally, and that's really what we do and do very, very well. So we're proud of all of those locations. You have supported us through members of our Board, Neen Avery, Himanshu Kaver, Matt Kern, Max Queen, good, good Board Members. They give us good advice, good leadership, and we're proud that they are a part of our Board of Trustees. We also have appointed by the Governor, you can see Teresa Banks, Joe Brummett, David King, Libby Kyle's also serve and serve well. The third group of our Board comes from school boards, and you can see Dr. John Parram, Dr. Roger Metcalf, Judy Lewis. We have one more slot available. I believe that's the City School Board, if I'm not mistaken. But all of these members, regardless of who appoints them, regardless of where they come from in our community, once they come into our boardroom, represent the students, faculty, and staff of AB Tech. And that's the important role in supporting our whole community in their leadership and guidance. We also have two members from Madison County, Wayne Brigham, Francis Ramsey. I will tell you that our SGA representative has left the community. It's kind of bittersweet. She, I think she went to Colorado, got a job offer she just could not refuse and left midterm. But we also have representative of, by the students on our Board to get that perspective as well. You've asked for dates and accomplishments. I came in July. I will tell you that this is the oddest year of my 30-plus years in education. It feels like summer all year long because our students just aren't on campus. I will tell you, and it's on another slide, but I'll tell you now, when the pandemic hit a year and a half ago, we transitioned as much as we could to online learning. Now, obviously, you can't teach somebody to build cabinets or work on an automobile on the computer. So labs, clinicals, shops, they've been on campus, distanced, masked. We've got alcohol wipes and hand sanitizers all over the place. So we've kept people very safe. Our HR department has done an outstanding job of keeping our students, faculty, and staff COVID-free. Our numbers are less than national averages in that regard. We talked last month about our INCA campus. We're excited about the opportunities that we have there. We've also talked with you about the roof replacements. As a reminder, what we'd like to do with INCA, top-down, inside-out, to get those, that one building up to speed, if you will, so we can expand our offerings. At your request, we are discussing a plan of action for the other side of that INCA campus as we speak. So that should come back to you soon, and that will give us a full plan for that entire We talked about shifting our instruction. We are in the middle of a five-year strategic plan. I will tell you that I was in this building yesterday, saw your strategic plan, picked up a copy of that, brought that back to our leadership. We are going to use that format and really try to dovetail as much as we're doing with the county's plan because it's important. You mentioned us in that plan. We're very thankful for that, and we want to support your efforts in economic development through training and education. Obviously, Pratt &amp; Whitney is a huge part of what our plans are for the future. We are working toward a training center, excited about the opportunities for the people in Buncombe County. We believe these jobs are going to be transformational, not only for that company, but for all of industry, pushing wages up in all aspects of our economy. So we're looking forward to that. We've already done some training. We have people ready to be interviewed just as soon as the Pratt folks are ready to interview those potential employees. I'll also tell you that we are working with various agencies throughout the county, working hard to attract citizens who may not think that that's a possibility. Because these kinds of jobs, we believe, can be transformational in families. I will tell you as quickly as I can, and it happens with all of us in this room, somebody in our past has said, "You need to go to school. You need to get further education," and that changed the trajectory of our families. For me, it was my grandmother who pushed my dad and his brothers to go to college. If not, I'd still be in West Tennessee, making a living on a farm. So I can tell you it's transformational. We believe these jobs will be transformational for our citizens as well. Big question always comes up, "When are you coming back to campus?" We will be back in the fall. We will follow CDC guidelines. We will follow county guidelines on distancing and masks, but our students are telling us in surveys, they want to come back face-to-face. And we are going to make that happen as best we can in as safe a fashion as we can. Legislative updates, things that we're talking about are the same things that our legislators are talking about. Our employees, our teachers, faculty and staff really haven't had a pay increase in quite a while. We're excited about those opportunities. The Governor has put that as a priority. We're understanding that's also a priority in the House and Senate. The biggest thing about COVID, it has thrown all of us in the community college industry for a loop as far as how we provide our instruction, what that looks like. So we would ask the Journal Assembly, please hold us harmless when it comes to budget because, to be honest, if we were to take a cut to match our headcount, it would be, we couldn't do it in nickels and dimes here and there. We would have to, it would be programmatic changes, and we just don't want to do that because, long-term, that's not the solution. As y'all know, we have been a proud partner of the county's attempt to beat back this virus, and we thank you. As a matter of fact, I'm honored that you would call us to use our campus as a vaccine site. As I told our faculty and staff, Muhammad Ali had a fight in the mid-'70s where he was against the ropes and let, I believe it was Foreman, beat on him for a while. And then when Foreman got tired, Ali started fighting back. Well, when we opened that vaccine site on our campus, I told our faculty and staff, "We're fighting back. It gives us power. It gave us a big boost in the arm." Thank you for letting us be a partner in that effort. Also, we've, you know, worked with the Mexican consulate to help those individuals come, visited with them. Outstanding people in the way that they're helping those citizens get their paperwork, get the COVID vaccine. It's just, it's just a lot of fun to be a partner and a part of the solution. You know, you can read this. We've donated PPEs. We've worked with y'all on that regard. Volunteered our nurses to help with the shots, and that was a great experience for them. You've invited us to serve on various COVID committees. So on behalf of everybody at AB Tech, thank you for letting us be a part of the solution. I think we're going to talk with you next week about our budget. Looking forward to those conversations as well. So that's my presentation. Are there questions?
Got one question.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Gossett, I saw in your PowerPoint a slide about a South Buncombe campus location. I assume that's in addition to the Pratt &amp; Whitney facility.
Yes, we've been, Mars Hill University owns a building on Airport Road, and we've had a presence there for a while with INCA, with Pratt &amp; Whitney, with that space. Puts three campuses really pretty close together. We hearing rumors that Mars, well, they're not rumors, Mars Hill has that building on the market. We don't know where they are with the sale of that building, and, you know, so we're working through what will that look like if and when that building sells. Hopefully Pratt &amp; Whitney building can serve as a location. I have a team working now to give me some solutions to that.
Okay.
But yeah, there's three campuses pretty close to each other.
Okay. So your intent may or may not be to have both a new South Buncombe location and a Pratt &amp; Whitney co-located.
I can neither confirm nor deny that that committee may or may not present to me.
Okay. That's my question. Okay.
Yeah, and that's a growing part of the county.
Yeah.
So, you know, of course, we want to serve those citizens as best we can. Then the question is, where do we do that, and how do we do that efficiently and effectively?
Thank you.
To be honest, one of our programs, our pilot program and airport management program, we'd love to have that close to the airport, and we're talking with Lou Blighweis on possible solutions for that as well.
All right. Dr. Gossett, we're glad to have you with us. Thanks for being here tonight and giving us the updates. Thank you. We really appreciate the partnership with AB Tech too on the COVID-19 vaccination. That's been the most productive location in the county, and it's where most people in our community have had the opportunity to get vaccinated and protected. So thank you very much. It's, we've heard so much positive feedback from the community about this site, so we really thank you for the partnership.
Well, I get a lot of compliments, and, you know, I can't accept them all. We unlocked the doors. Y'all did the work, but again, we are just so thankful to be a part of the solution, and you and your staff did just an outstanding job, and I can't say enough good things about it. We're the community's college. We want to be a part of the solutions, whatever the problem is.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much. We'll see you next week. All right. Next up is a presentation from the Mountain Community Capital Fund, and Lynn Smith, the Board Chair, is going to talk to us about the capital fund.
Good afternoon, Chairman Newman, Commissioners. I'm standing before you as the Chair of the Mountain Community Capital Fund, wanting to offer our annual update. Max, do you? Oh, yeah. Good. So I'll start by sharing our members. We have Mia as Chair, Jeff Kaplan, Vice Chair, Tim Love, Dee Williams, Rachel Nygaard, Nikki Reed, Tony McDowell. We also get additional staff support from Angelica Driver and Rosanna Mokehi. The purpose of the committee, to kind of refresh your mind a little bit, is to offer guaranteed loans for those who otherwise may not be able to get funding because of a lack of collateral and maybe a low credit score. The loan offers range from $5,000, that's the minimum, up to $70,000, and we've partnered with Mountain Biz Works, Carolina Small Business, and Self Help Credit Union. They are our three CDFIs that offer the loans. These are just some dates and accomplishments, just to remind you. We had the first signing of the agreements to officially begin the fund in October 2018, and had our first official meeting April 5th, 2019. And then last year, I believe it was November, you guys agreed to extend the fund for an additional five years. So this is our financial update. This is the good part, right? We currently have eight active loans. The total loan amount that those eight loans total is $290,499.62. We guarantee 85% of each loan amount, so that brings our total to $246,924.68. That's what we've guaranteed. Our fund had a total amount of $450,000 to use to guarantee, so we stand right now approximately at $203,075. And these figures were from last month, so they may have changed just a bit. This is our most recent that we've gotten from our CDFIs. And the impact, this is why we do what we do. The number of jobs created, we created 48 full and part-time jobs, 46, excuse me. The number of jobs that were retained were 22, and that includes full and part-time. Four African-American men, three African-American women, and one identifying as a minority woman. These are the people who were recipients of those loans. And our goals, we're still building our goals, but I wanted to just note where we're headed, and we're talking about who we can partner with in our community to gain additional capital so that we can continue to grow the fund and continue to impact the entrepreneurs that we want to reach. Are there any questions?
I don't think there are at this time. So Lynn, thank you so much for the update. We appreciate it, and thanks for your service on the capital fund.
Thank you so much.
All right. Commissioners, we now come to our public hearings, and the first will be consideration of recognizing Juneteenth as an additional county holiday, and Sharon Burke, our H.R. Director for Buncombe County, is going to explain this item.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So what is Juneteenth? So it's best answered through a historical perspective. Let's get moving over there. So on July 4th, 1776, the Second Continental Congress unanimously adopted the Declaration of Independence, announcing the colonies- of Independence, announcing the colony's separation from Great Britain. Then more than 87 years later, President Abraham Lincoln issued the Emancipation of Proclamation, and that was on January 1 of 1863, where the proclamation declared that all persons held as slaves were henceforth shall be freed. Then more than two years later, on June 19, 1865, Union soldiers landed in Galveston, Texas, and they announced that those that were enslaved were free. Juneteenth signifies freedom and liberation for African-American individuals in the United States. Juneteenth is the oldest national celebrated commemoration of the ending of slavery in the United States. So the Juneteenth County Holiday, so how did this all come about? So last spring, some of our staff members came to us and asked for us to consider adding Juneteenth as a holiday. And it happened right as COVID was beginning, and so we knew we couldn't take that on. But we promised that we would consider this as part of our next budget consideration. And so what we did was we reviewed our holiday schedule through the racial equity lens. And just to note that this includes 4th of July, and 4th of July is a commemoration of Americans' independence. So then we looked at, what would it do for our budget? Would there be any budget implications? And there wouldn't be. And the reason for that is our employees are already in pay status. So any of those that are required to work for some mandatory services, they would be able to bank their holidays and be able to use it at another date. Then we looked at, and gathered some research. And so what we did was we reached out to the county's Equity and Inclusion Group, and we asked them to do some research for us and provide some findings. And so in there, what they did was they provided feedback, and they looked at it through both a pros and a cons lens. And so I'm going to provide you some of the feedback that they gave to us. And so it is, you know, Juneteenth, it is representing the authentic and more inclusive history of the United States. It is a celebration of independence and freedom. It is an opportunity to recognize the reality of what the American experience has been for African-American people who live in the United States. It is a celebration of African-American, of the African-American experience and their struggles and resiliency. It is acknowledgement and reconciliation that could hopefully uniti, create unity and peace in America, and encourage, hopefully, other jurisdictions to, and entities to add this holiday. So, I prefer not to call it cons, I prefer to call it opportunities. So some of the opportunities that we saw is that it does show that America has a very complicated history, and it could be considered divisive. It may be considered unwanted and harsh, the past, that is. The inquiry of what other marginal groups have as a commemoration of their American independence. And so after all this, the consideration from this DEI or Equity and Inclusion Work Group is they highly supported this additional holiday. So I also looked at, what are the, what's going on with public, you know, our various public entities? And so this day is observed as a ceremonial holiday in 47 states, including North Carolina. And so some of the research we did was we looked at 18 counties, and that included our top 10. And those top 10 that I'm mentioning are the, that's the benchmark that we look at and we bench ourselves against here in North Carolina. And we also looked at 28 cities. And you'll see the feedback that we have here. What we found was that those that did add Juneteenth, they added the additional day, and the average holidays that were provided are between 13, 12, and 12 and 14, but really it's 12 and 13. I, you know, it's, I even, and you're going to see over here in the number of holidays where any place that was, had any kind of variance, I added, you know, what that variance So today, we are asking for you to consider adding Juneteenth as the county's 13th holiday. And that holiday, if approved, would be observed on the Friday on or before June 19 annually. For this year, it will be effective on Friday, June 18. And one of the areas that, you know, we are committed to do is providing education, helping people understand that why Juneteenth is really, really important, highlighting our progress and intentional work to advance racial equity, and to illustrate continued commitment to equality and equity. So that's my presentation.
Thank you, Sharon. Thank you very much for the presentation. We do have a public hearing on this item. So let's go ahead and open the public hearing at 6:00 PM. Are there any members of the public who submitted comments or wish to comment on this proposal?
We didn't have anyone sign up for public comment, for this public hearing.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Joyner. So I'll close the public hearing at 6:01 PM. Commissioners, are there any questions, discussion, or emotion?
I'd just like to say, you know, the company I work for in my day job made this a paid holiday for us last year. And, you know, it was an educational opportunity for me I hadn't heard of. Hadn't heard the Galveston, Texas story. I didn't realize that. I'd missed that in our history. So I just think it's a great way to educate our staff, to educate the community, and to, you know, for our employer, employees and employer to be an example to others. So, it's great.
Speaking of education, I can remember years ago when I was in college, a good friend of mine was from Dallas, Texas. And somehow it came up, and he was talking about Juneteenth and the celebration. Well, it was widely celebrated west of Mississippi, but east, not as much. And when he started telling me about it, I looked at him like, he said, "What? You don't know about Juneteenth?" And I told him, "No, I don't." And that was my introduction to it then, and the important, you know, part that it played in history. But, you know, I think that would go a long way. I agree. And I think it should be celebrated, you know, by our staff and the county, because it is an important date in history. And, you know, I heard of a speaker earlier was saying that what this will do going forward, what he left out was, hopefully, this will help us start the conversation and correct some of what's happened the past 400 years. You know, it works both ways. But I think it's good. And it's, and we're saying a lot, not only to our employees, but to the community. So, I'm for it. You need a motion?
Yes, please.
I move.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and second to support the recognition of Juneteenth and to create it as an additional Buncombe County holiday. Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you so much. Thank you, Sharon, for the presentation.
Thank you.
And thanks for all the county staff and others in the community who had input on, in bringing this forward. Thank you so much.
Do you get?
Okay. The next item is adoption or consideration of adoption of 160D, the Buncombe County Code of Ordinances Integration. And Nate Pennington, the Planning Director, is going to present this item.
We're going to tag-team this, also a Brandon Freeman, who has been my partner all along through this process. So we'll kind of move back and forth through the presentation. Good evening, Chair, Commissioners, Members of the Public. This is a long time in the making, but we'll pull up the presentation here in just a second.
I don't believe I have a PowerPoint for this.
Okay.
Is there a response?
Yes. While he's getting that ready, there's an entire book on this topic. Wish to further your education on it. Or if you'd prefer the abbreviated slide deck.
Yes.
I'll show that to you. So while that's coming up, I'm just going to read from the introduction itself. Chapter 160D, essentially, it consolidates the enabling legislation for both cities and counties across the state of North Carolina. Here it comes. Thank you. So, the book that's pictured here is the Code of Ordinances for Buncombe County, another fascinating book if you ever care to delve into a number of the ordinances that we enforce. So, this is just a sampling. These are the chapters that are most affected by the integration of 160D. 160D means that it took 153A and 160A. One was the cities, one was the counties, put them together into one chapter, commonly known now as 160D. We have many, many other ordinances that are contained within this book, but we're only focusing on the ones affected by these changes. Here's just a way to look at, what does this do and what does it not do? The intent was to unify enabling legislation for cities and counties into one chapter, as I had mentioned. Over the years, as laws were added that affected land use and other similar sort of enforcement ordinances, they had to be done in two separate chapters. Over time, it got cumbersome. This was a way to reel it back in and put it into one chapter as a reorganization effort. It also makes an attempt to remove archaic, confusing language. For instance, conditional use permits now become special use permits. It's divided into things that you must do and things that you may do. And we're under a time crunch. We need to have our musts done by July the 1st. So we're well ahead of the curve to make sure we meet that deadline. It does not, the intent was not to make major policy changes, and it does not shift the scope of authority granted to local governments. So here's some of the sample actions. Again, there's over 300 and some change affected pages that are in the Code of Ordinances. That's included in your packet. You'll see those used with the underline and strike-through. This is a sampling of that. So, Example 1, special replaces conditional. There's numerous sections where 153 gets struck and it gets replaced with 160D. I'd like to turn, Brandon is going to explain one of the more significant additions, and that had to do with ethical standards as it relates to some of our appointed boards and commissions.
Stand on the next slide.
You can still stay on that one if you want. Just a quick sampling of what the ethics part did.
One thing that we changed that was not in a building or a land use ordinance specifically was the ethical obligations of board members. Buncombe County has done a good job of, as those standards have changed, updating their ordinances, but they're kind of all over the place. So, we've added to the first chapter of our Code of Ordinances something that outlines the ethical obligations of appointed board members, staff members, and people who deal with not only land use decisions, but any quasi-judicial decisions throughout the county to make it easier to find where those obligations are. That is one change that was not specific to 160D, though 160D did say that you had to make sure that you were following those rules. We do follow those rules, and now they're in one place, hopefully easier to find.
So, piggybacking on that, we had some additional text amendment items that we felt were important enough to go ahead and place within this overall text amendment. One of those is recommended by the school government. It's to transfer the duties for variance review and administrative appeals and any other quasi-judicial function to the Board of Adjustment. What that does is that keeps legislative bodies legislative and quasi-judicial bodies quasi-judicial. Cleans up references to departments that do not currently function in ordinance administration capacities. There were numerous references that said, "General Services takes care of junk vehicles." Just relics of the past. It's an opportunity to do small amounts of housekeeping without straying too far away from the general purpose. And it corrects references specifically, like it talked about receptacle placement in manufactured homes. So very basic minor alterations there. We've had numerous discussions with the Planning Board along the way. The Planning Board heard these changes. They reviewed them on March 22nd and took a vote unanimously to forward a recommendation to the Commissioners to approve those changes on April the 5th. They're still in a virtual cycle, so that requires two hearings, one to review it and one to actually vote. We could speak all day about matters contained within this text amendment, and we're here for any questions. Brandon, do you have anything additional to add on this?
I do not, happy to answer any questions.
At this time, so we do need to have a public hearing on this evening. So why don't we go ahead and do that? I'll open the public hearing at 6:10 PM. Have any public comments on the proposed ordinance?
No one registered for public comments for this public hearing.
All right. Then I'll, I'm sorry, yeah. I'll close the public hearing at 6:12 PM. All right, so we need just a motion to approve the proposed ordinance.
That's correct.
Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the proposed ordinance in coordination with the adoption of 160D.
Is there a second? Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thanks, I know there's a lot of work that went into this, but it sounds like a great step forward to make this all more user-friendly. So we appreciate all the hard work that went into this. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. And Nathan Pennington is going to stay with us and present the Brown rezoning request.
Thank you again, Chair, Commissioners, and Members of the Public. At the very end of this, we're going to see one of the effects of 160D that actually simplifies this process. So I will reveal that in just a moment. This is a rezoning request, ZPH 2021-00011, the Brown zoning map amendment. The applicant is Angela Kent. She is representing Gregory Brown, who's the owner. The address is at 9 Chalmers Way in Swannanoa. Familiarize yourself with the property. You need to go up Patton Cove Road, almost a Mama Gertie's. The current zoning is R1. The proposed zoning of the property would be RLD, low density. So this is a downzoning request that's owner-initiated. The property is, it's fairly rural in that area as you make your way up Patton Cove Road. There's a lot of detached manufactured homes. Some properties have groupings of manufactured homes, and there's single-family homes in the area as well. High Hickory is a subdivision that's also located in the area, so it's just sort of a mixed bag of development. And it's surrounded by pretty steep topography on either side as you make your way up the cove itself. The property is 4.59 acres. It's currently vacant. A manufactured home was there, but it was recently torn down, and it is served by well and septic. So the development potential is very low. This is just another way to look at it. As you make your way almost to the end of Patton Cove Road, you can see Mama Gertie's up there at the very top. High Hickory is called out, and then the subject property itself. It aligns with the comprehensive plan, specifically the need to accommodate labeled manufactured homes in certain instances and under the, we're also including from now on this point forward, alignment with the strategic plan, the goal of ensuring policies and practices eliminate barriers to allow for equitable opportunity are discussed on page 31 of that plan. Staff's recommendation here is approval. Action by the Planning Board. The Planning Board found the map request to be consistent with the comp plan and the strategic plan, and the Planning Board unanimously recommended approval to the Commissioners. I will say that because this is a downzoning request, we are not required to evaluate a number of the items contained with the consistency statement. And now I'm going to reveal something that 160D did. 160D says, "We are now able to integrate that consistency statement into the ordinance from this point forward." Tonight will be the last time we're going to do two votes. We're going to do the consistency statement first, and then we're going to do your vote for the rezoning request. And anytime I come in the future, or any other staff member, it's in one vote. And anytime I come in the future, or any other staff member, it's in one document, one vote. And that concludes my presentation.
All right. Thanks, Nate. Um, so, in terms of the consistency statement, because it is a downzoning, a lot of these things, normally, you're trying to make sure it's, you're justifying its consistency, you know, for potentially more development activity. Here, it would be less. So, but we still need to cite some basis for it from the list of, um, criteria. Is that right?
I have got you all taken care of right here. I pulled out two of the items that we could consider as part of the consistency. Happy to, uh, walk you through that when we get to that point.
Okay. Just, well, can we just, like, talk about it while we're on it?
Sure.
Uh, we do support it. So, it's the outside, outside of flood hazard areas is one. What's the other?
Um, I was thinking, even though you don't have to evaluate, it's close enough to I forties, we could consider it within proximity to a major transportation corridor.
Okay. So, items A and F could potentially be cited as basis for it. Okay. All right. Um, so, we do need to have a public hearing on this item as well. So, I'll open the public hearing at six sixteen P.M. Are there any public comments?
No one signed up for public comment for this public hearing.
Okay. Great. I'll close the public hearing at six seventeen P.M. So, um, are there any questions, or is there a motion, um, regarding the consistency statement? All right. I'll make a motion, um, that the, to recommend approval based on its consistency with the county's plans, um, including the fact that it's, the said zoning change is consistent with figure twenty, appropriate development types, the Buncombe County Comprehensive Land Use Plan and Updates, because the proposed rezoning is, it's within reasonable proximity to a major transportation corridor, and it's outside of flood hazard areas.
Second.
Are we motion and second? And, um, do we need to read the remainder of the consistency statement, or is it, because it's published, it's, it's okay? Okay. Great. All right. We have a motion and second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And is there a motion to, um, implement the actual rezoning to R L D? All right. There's a motion and second to rezone to residential low density. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you, Mr. Pennington. Appreciate it. All right. Ms. Pender, do you have any items under the county manager's report?
No report.
Very good. We do not have any old business. Under new business, first, we have consideration of a letter of commitment for public financing of mountain housing opportunities, low-income housing tax credit program project application.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Tonight, we are bringing forward to you a recommendation from the Affordable Housing Committee. As you can see in the item, um, and materials that we provided you, the committee has been reviewing project proposals, uh, associated with the FY twenty-two Affordable Housing Services Program, budget and funding. And throughout that process, um, the committee identified that there was a project, actually two projects submitted by Mountain Housing Opportunities, that were also seeking low-income housing tax credits, um, and those applications are due in May. And so, the committee recommended to bring forward to the board, um, a request that the board approve and authorize the chairman, uh, in concert with staff, to issue letters of commitment associated with the upcoming budget year's allocation of funding in the amount of eight hundred thousand dollars to show local government support of those projects. I would be happy to answer any questions that you have about this request.
Thank you, Matt. I guess I would ki- kind of just, I'll give a little context here. This is kind of like the modular, uh, project for the schools in that the Early Childhood Education Committee is making a series of recommendations, but that piece had some time sensitivity to move it ahead. This is kind of similar. We're gonna bring our overall recommendations from the Affordable Housing Subcommittee to the board, but if we wanna try to have a positive influence on this, uh, tax credit allocation from the state housing finance agency, which is probably like the most important thing that happens all year long regarding, um, the ability to build these larger, uh, permanently affordable projects, then, um, we need to weigh in on it, um, at this meeting. So, we'd be providing a letter, um, of support for this, and then with the other recommendations will be coming forward, but this is all, will be included within the, the budget for Affordable Housing Services. So, any questions? Or a, I guess we need a, the request is for a motion to authorize the issuance of this letter that I could sign, which will be developed by the staff, uh, to document our approval of the eight, eight hundred thousand dollars for, um, the mountain, for a, a mountain housing project. Again, they have, as Matt said, they have two proposals, but only one of them will be funded. We know Buncombe County will only get one project, um, will receive these tax credit allocations, so it's not for two projects, it's just for whichever of those projects is selected.
I so moved.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
And, our final item under new business is a consideration of a budget amendment for occupancy tax fund, adjustment for growth, and Jennifer Barnett will present this item.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. I wanted to follow up, um, provide you some additional context as a result of questions from the briefing earlier today. Uh, the questions were, do we realistically expect that we would, I do believe, receive twenty-six point five million in occupancy tax? And then the additional question is, what have we received year-to-date? So, to answer those two questions, uh, we have received, as of today, eighteen million four hundred and ninety-four thousand five hundred dollars.
I'm sorry, since, I'm sorry. Repeat that figure, please.
Eighteen million four hundred and ninety-four thousand five hundred dollars.
Okay. And we still have a few months left, so it's gonna grow some more.
That's correct. And so, when we were evaluating for the budget amendment, looking at our projection, we had received eight periods, um, of revenue, and the lowest period in the month was one point four, one point four million to be received in a month, with the highest month of three point one million. So, you can see that it swings.
Yeah.
So, we work towards a projection that ensures that we don't incur a budget violation. I have to have sufficient budget to be able to pay that out through the end of the fiscal year to the TDA. So, we are requesting a budget of twenty-six point five, um, as that would be, uh, an up to, it's a maximum, um, just to ensure that we have sufficient dollars to be able to pass back through to the TDA.
And if, like, in our budget, like, on just sales tax revenues, um, if we, um, exceeded our sales, what's in our budget in terms of sales tax revenues, we also have to do budget amendments for those, even though it's a purely internal to the county, kind of, well, actually, may not be, because we have to-
Not necessarily.
We have to divide out some of those sales tax revenues, right? So, we would have to do the same kind of exercise if we exceeded our sales tax forecast.
That we have to pay out.
That we have to pay out.
Right. If it's coming to the county and it's ours, we don't have to increase it, but if we have to cut a check, we need to have budget to cover that check.
Okay.
So, I'm happy to answer any further questions.
What happened if it exceeds that?
If it does exceed that, and we've not, we have not come to you to request a bu- a budget amendment, there would be the potential we would have an audit finding as a result of it.
That's what you will call the budget violation, and that will be a finding that the, the LGC would also tell you. We'll need to send our reports to the LGC that we have violated our budget.
All right. Any other questions, or is there a motion to approve the adjustment for the occupancy tax fund adjustment for growth?
So moved.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Okay.
I was.
We don't have any board appointments to handle this evening, right?
You're, you're correct, but can I mention a few items to you-
Sure.
-in that potential line item? Um, we will have some interviews coming up, um, in the month of June. Just wanna inform you, I know, um, the planning department spoke about interviews for some other, um, for that committee, but we'll have, uh, quite a few for, um, early childhood education. We have about fifteen applications for, uh, two positions thus far, so just wanna give you a heads-up on that. The deadline to apply for these positions, uh, is May the twenty-eighth, so just wanna give you, um, a little bit of heads-up on that. And I would also like to, um, if the board could get the word out, we have quite a few, uh, positions that we don't have applications for that have been, we've been advertising for probably, uh, the last month or so, so if we could get the board to, um, reach out to their connections and have people apply for some of these positions, that would be gratefully appreciated.
Amma, could you email those to us, the boards?
We definitely can, and, um, what I would do, I will just email a link out to that information that is on our website, and therefore, you can share it that way.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Um, we've got a couple of announcements I'm gonna make, and then we're gonna go into closed session to address the legal matter that we discussed earlier, or to hear about a legal matter, um, or to hear about a matter that's permissible to consider in closed session. Michael Frue will explain it. Let me do the announcements first. May eleventh at one thirty P.M., Commissioners will hold a budget work session at two hundred College Street, room three two six in downtown Asheville. On May eighteenth at three P.M., the county commissioners will hold their briefing meeting at two hundred College Street, room three two six in downtown Asheville. And on May eighteenth at five P.M., the county commissioners will hold a regular meeting at two hundred College Street, room three two six in downtown Asheville. Mr. Frue, could you, um, go over again the purpose of the closed session that's needed this evening?
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, we need a motion to go into closed session pursuant to General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen eleven A three, uh, to discuss a legal matter to, uh, retain the attorney-client privilege, and that's also pursuant to subsection A five, to discuss a real estate proposal. We just need direction from the board at this time.
All right. We're not expecting to take any action this evening.
Yes, sir.
Is there a motion to go into closed session?
So moved. Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We're in closed session, and again, when we return from closed session, we don't anticipate taking any action. We'll simply go back into open session and then adjourn.